So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our April 19th Board of Supervisors meeting. Before I call this meeting to order, please, if you have cell phones, turn them off or put them on mute. If it goes off, we're going to close the door, and then it's going to be an expensive lunch, because we all like to eat steak and lobster. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Mr. Palmer, would you do us the honor of leading us in the flag, sir?
My pleasure. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There are no changes.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted and deliver, and allow Chair to deviate as necessary.
So moved.
Second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our agenda is adopted. We will move on to item C, call to the public. Mr. Palmer, it's good to see you, my friend.
Just for the record, my name is Jim Palmer, and I represent Community Broadband Advocates, a consultant firm which has been doing some work for Santa Cruz County on broadband infrastructure. I want to start off by saying thank you for the invitation to be here this morning and the opportunity to work with you. Whenever I come here, I feel like I'm among friends, having been 20 years on the Graham County Board of Supervisors, and now having the privilege of working with all of you. And we really appreciate the working relationship we have with you. We really appreciate Juan and his efforts to work with us as we've moved forward on this, and look forward to continued progress, and appreciate Jennifer and all of her efforts. We feel like we have made some big steps, and we have a lot of steps left to go. I was asked to just make a brief report to kind of bring you up to speed on where we're at in the process thus far. But on my eyes here, we have submitted a grant to the Arizona Commerce Authority partnering with Valley Telecom Group. And the grant we've submitted, we believe, is a very strong application. We're very optimistic about some degree of success in that. I will tell you, though, that this grant cycle was way oversubscribed. I think it shocked even ACA at the number of grant applications they received. I think around 85 in 15 counties. As you can tell, that's way more than are going to be successful. We also feel like a substantial part of those will be, won't make the first cut, because they're not real strong applications or possibly not even legitimate applications. This is for a fiber optic backbone that will go in the Patagonia, Sonoita, Elgin area that will be expandable for growth into the future. And we think it will bring a much-needed service to that part of eastern Santa Cruz County. ACA has a target date of June 30th. That's much later than they anticipated it being. But because of loss of staff, they're running very shorthanded. And the sheer number of applications to review, it's taking them longer than they thought. But they are anticipating awarding the successful grants on June 30th. And we are anxiously awaiting what we hope is a successful outcome there. There will be another round of funding. In fact, there will be several rounds of funding to follow. This one, we expect, in late summer or early fall. And we need to start preparing now to act on that, to work with you. I know we have had discussions about a study session going forward to see where do we want to go. We feel like it will be important to have some community meetings. And in discussing this with Juan, there is a group here that I have met with in the past, the BAT team. And we feel like they will be able to help us in having some of those community meetings. But mostly, it's going to be instrumental that I think we work with you and so we can educate the public as we go forward in the next round of funding and the next process and decide what the next steps are and where we go in the broadband world. We also have had discussions. We have been contacted by a major carrier in the area that is very interested in looking at the possibilities of expanding services in the I-19 corridor in Santa Cruz County. They have requested that we have a meeting in the near future with this carrier and with all of you to talk about their interest. Whenever you can get a commercial carrier to come into an area that doesn't require funding and can bring additional services. And we see that as a great opportunity also to expand where we're going with this. We will be in communication with you as we hear more from them and as we set up a future meeting to bring them into the picture and we think some great potential and possibilities. I know you have a long agenda before you, and I wanted to keep this brief. But I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity to work with you. We look forward to many successes as we go forward. And it's been our pleasure, as the team at CBA, to help solve this problem and identify needs and solve those as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for coming down. The Honorable Superintendent Alfredo Velasquez. Good morning, my friend.
Good morning.
It's good to see you.
Likewise. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Molera, Supervisor Bracker, Ms. St. John, Kim, and Mauricio, the community. I want to have some great news to share with all of you. Last Thursday, we found out that our office was awarded $5.8 million through the Arizona Department of Education. And I brought our chief deputy, Chris Young, and our leadership team so that I could acknowledge their hard work in doing this application, as well as our partners, all the school districts, the Boys and Girls Club, the U of A Cooperative Extension, the Santa Cruz and Nogales libraries, and also our charter schools and private schools. This grant is going to be phenomenal. It's interwoven from early childhood all the way to college and career readiness. We're talking about enriching our mental and behavioral health and wellness program, which includes bringing in some health coaches into our program and also having them work at the Boys and Girls Club and our schools. The exciting part is that Chris working with the U of A Cooperative Extension, Sonoitas and the east part of the county is going to have their own early childhood center. And also, we have put in for funding for a childcare center for our employees in Santa Cruz County as well. So I am excited about that. On top of that, our arts is going to have a phenomenal run. We've got 74 concert series that are going to be played throughout the three-year period of this grant. We're going to also have humanities and historians onboard to work with us, to bring in the students to learn more about our county. Maya is going to bring in more success coaches into the middle schools to get them prepared for college and vocational schools. Our internship program is going to grow. I want to thank Sonia for being part of this as well. So I can't tell you how excited I am. I don't know where my time is, but...
Hey, I waved it just because...
Oh, thank you.
I don't know what he was thinking about.
Because you haven't shown any kind of excitement yet, so I'm waving.
Wow. So anyways, I want to tell you that we're bringing in... Thank you. We're bringing in 19 positions into the county through this grant. On top of that contractual positions, we're also creating a literacy program. And we're going to have a traveling mobile stopping at the different neighborhoods throughout the county. We look forward to working with WIA on this as well. We have a technology component also. And that's also going to be part of this grant. 13 of the 19 positions are in-house. And so we're looking to expanding our art center at the old courthouse as well. We're bringing in literacy specialists into this project. We're bringing... Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District requested an expansion of the early childhood program. So they're getting an extra building over there. Also, their special needs program is going to be enriched through this funding as well. We are also working on, with a library, tutoring. You know that I don't have to tell you that the last two years created a lot of problems for our kids. The tutoring that's going to be provided through this grant is going to be phenomenal. And we're looking forward to working with the libraries as well on this. Our summer camps. You know, several years ago, we started with two summer camps. I want to thank Maya and the team. We're up to 20 summer camps, from arts to robotics. We also have a STEM program involved in this. And I want to thank Chris for bringing the Tecnico Chicas and the robotics program into this. And of course, the arts. We're going to be working with Angie Dickinson and also with local employers and artists to make sure that, you know, we partner up and doing some projects with them. I also want to thank you for your support. It's been 16 years that I've been here, and it's been a wonderful journey. And I want to thank management, finance, the county attorneys, because I know we are constantly on your cases about, you know, we need this, we need that. And we couldn't do it without you. But I also want to thank the community for all your support, you know, and this awesome team that I have here. You know, we're going to make a difference out there. $5.8 million is a lot of money. And I'm super excited. And we look forward to giving you a breakdown. And I also want to thank Jesus for all his support as we moved into the historic courthouse, as well as Tracy.
He tried to do it in three minutes. We know Alfredo. Three minutes is like 10 minutes later. But Alfredo, congratulations to you and your team. Thank you so much for what you do for this community and our kids. I really appreciate it. Anyone else under a call to the public? Anyone out in Zoom world wishing to address the board? Raise your hand, please. I do not see any, so we'll go on to item D, and that is current events. Vice Chairman Bracker.
Good morning, Chairman Reese and everybody who's joined us this morning. Two weeks ago, I forgot to report that I went to the brand-new Rio Rico Performing Arts Center. And it was really nice to be able to see a well-done play. And when my kids were there, we used to watch the plays in the cafeteria. So it was really nice that they did a really great job on this performing arts center. So I'd like to congratulate them. I was able to participate in some of the meetings that we had this, Zoom meetings we've had this week with the congressional staff. So I'd like to thank staff for setting that up. It's a good schedule. Had people every day. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with NAD Bank. And so what they did was they did a listening session. They came out, they invited Yuma, Pima, just the border region. Yuma County, Pima County, Santa Cruz County, Cochise County. They did it through the Arizona Border Counties Coalition. And so Jesus and Angie Donaldson were able to attend that with me. It just looks at different funding streams for us on the border region. We hosted, Santa Cruz County hosted the ADOT board meeting last Friday. I'd like to thank staff for doing a really good job organizing that. They were super happy with our technology in this boardroom. It was a super easy setup for them. And so during that time, I was able to thank the board for all the work that they've done on I-19 rehabilitation of the Ruby Road Bridge, the extension, you know, the rehabilitation of I-19 from Tubac all the way through Saguadita, and also for the maintenance crew, because the maintenance crews have really been doing a great job as something Supervisor Molera has been asking them to do for many years. They've been cleaning up the median. But they've just been, beyond that, they've just been doing a lot of work out here. So it was a good opportunity. We had Maritam Murphy from Saguadita joined us. And I think Arcarino was in the back of the room. So that was really good. After that meeting, we had a meeting with... So I'm not sure everybody's aware. ADOT and DPS, ADOT transferred their truck inspection responsibilities to DPS. And so there was, they're doing a series of meetings. So one of the meetings they had was in Nogales. So I was able to attend that meeting and just express our concern that it not become an enforcement unit, that it continue to be a compliance unit, and to continue working with the truck inspection trainings that they've been doing with the drivers and the mechanics in Mexico, because the companies that have done that have like a 99.8% compliance rating versus companies that don't do that. Getting these trucks through our ports of entry to their destinations is really our highest priority, not taking them out of service and delaying the delivery of the goods. So kudos to them for being open to work on that. And I hope everybody had a good Easter and was having a good Passover. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bracker. Supervisor Molera.
Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone had a wonderful Passover, Easter. It's a nice, calm weekend. Lot of things going on. It's very exciting, very, very exciting. And I'm excited about our partnerships. We have amazing partnerships. Last week, we had our agreement with South 32 finalized through lots of public input over the last couple of weeks. And speaking of partnerships, I want to thank staff for all their due diligence through the whole process. Kim, especially Jennifer. I know you guys went back and forth for months. Thank you. I'm excited about the partnership with Angie. Angie's been doing a great job with our ARPA money. So it's really exciting, because a lot of things are going on in Santa Cruz County. Alfredito, congratulations. Seriously, I've seen your program just grow over the last couple of years. It's amazing. And you do have an incredible team, incredibly talented. And they're all locals, loyal, and it's amazing. Congratulations on the grant award. And it's exciting, very exciting. I had the honor and privilege of briefly attending the ADOT meeting last Friday. And I thank Bruce for representing the county and doing an amazing job, as always. Exciting, because we just finished SR 82, and we're moving on to new projects. And that partnership's amazing, too, because we worked with the Port Authority. And I mean, it's an incredible team that was put together for that project. You know, you're talking JB, Memo Valencia, Terry Shannon, our vice chairman did an amazing job. You know, people that grind, you know. And right now, it's Jaime. You know, our Port Authority is well-represented, and our county is well-represented. And it's a great team. And like I said, we're going to move on to Ruby Road and Exit 17 and other great things going on in Santa Cruz County. So it's very exciting. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I think I went over my three minutes, but I'm excited.
No, I think you were under. But you can yield those to Alfredo, if he needs them. So again, good morning. And I trust you had a joyful holiday season, whether you celebrate Passover or Easter. I think what was very important over last week is that we actually had the opportunity to... And, you know, in the age of Zoom, we were able to meet some of our congressional leaders via Zoom. In some cases, it was just staffers. But the congressmen that we talked to were Debbie Lesko. I talked to Paul Gozar. We talked to Congressman Grijalva, Stanton, O'Halloran... And I'm trying to think who else was on the calls with us. But some of the things that we, as elected officials, do here is that there are things that are beyond our scope. And we need to reach out to the federal government to assist us in those. Point, and case in point, is the SR 189. And that was through a lot of hard work, building relationships and partnerships, that we were able to get that expansion of 189 done and the flyover. However, we created such a good project that created choke points at other points along I-19. And so some of the things that, and I will tell you here, what we were talking to our congressional staff and members were, first of all, the Deconsini Port of Entry. There's money that has been appropriated to GSA to do a study. And so we want to make sure that we continue to have these projects on the radar of our elected officials so that when the funding is available, they can put it in there. As most of you know, if you go downtown on Grand Avenue, there are times that the traffic is backed up a bit. And that's because Customs is doing outbound inspections as well as when they do them inbound. The other one that we talk a lot about is the IOI, the International Outfall Interceptor. As you know, because of the commitment by the state, the International Boundary Commission, EPA, Freeport-McMoRan, there was a total of almost $39 million committed to do the first phase of a cure-in-place treatment for the sewer line. You know, there are a million of gallons of sewer that comes through that pipe every day, treated at the Nogales Treatment Plant. And it has been leaking and also absorbing water from there. And what we want to make sure is that it continues to operate without any kind of issues that could affect the health and welfare of this community and down the road up into Tucson. But that's just phase one. So we just wanted to make sure that our congressional delegation understood that there are a couple of other phases that are needed. And hopefully, they could find some type of funding to be able to complete the work all the way up to the Nogales Treatment Plant. Of course, it was mentioned transportation. We have some chokeholds there on Ruby Road and Rio Rico. I know that there's, the department already completed a design concept report on some of those improvements. And we're looking at $35 to $45 million to be able to do that. And so as grants or other things become available, we want to make sure that we apply for them, submit for them, and assist the state or whoever is responsible for that. And the other thing that we talked about was innovative inspection technologies. As you know, technology has changed so much. And we're asking our congressional leaders to have a test pilot program done at our ports of entries. So that would include a very non-intrusive inspection of vehicles, whether they're private or commercial. It would probably make it a lot safer for our customs people that, in some cases, at Deconsini, they're only a car length from Mexico. And now that they're doing the outbound inspections, the same. Representative Lasco did mention Title 42. She was concerned that the administration was going to lift that and kind of asked us some questions about that. I know we did mention that our two senators are trying to maybe have it pushed back another 60 days. And she was very gracious. She says, "Well, we've been doing that for a while as Republicans." And I said, "You know, Representative Lasco, I didn't mean to imply that you guys weren't doing anything, and I apologize." "No, no," and she just left it off. But there are a lot of issues that are affecting us down here. And the good thing about it is that we have created a great partnership between staff, the Port Authority, some Chamber of Commerce, some other groups that we are working with for the benefit of this great county of ours. And there's a lot of commercial traffic that comes that has a tremendous impact across the country. So I share my concerns with you, Bruce, on DPS taking over. We're seeing what's happening in Texas, which means they're going to push more truck traffic over here. So it's going to create more problems for our ports. So stay tuned. But I will say this, that our Arizona delegation, our senators, and our congressmen and women are very eager to assist us. And putting partisan ship aside, they want to work with us to make sure that we're able to have those funds. I want to thank them and again, staff, Liz. Who else worked on that with you?
Jeanette. Jeanette.
And Jeanette for reaching out and setting up. So I went over six minutes, but oh, well. I think it's important that the community realize what our talking points were. So with that, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you. Chairman Reese, we also posted those to the board's agendas once we realized that they weren't posted. So they're available for the public to review. Over the last two weeks, I attended the CSA Legislative Policy Meeting. Mauricio also rolled out the '23 budget. Those are due this Friday. So for those elected officials and department heads that are on the phone or listening, please don't forget those. And then we'll be having budget meetings the first two weeks of May. We attended the virtual meetings with the federal congressional delegation, as you all have mentioned. I also had a meeting with Mariposa Community Health Center. And I had a county manager's meeting. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move on to item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash, Investment, Expenditure, and Revenue Reports. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have the Cash and Investment Report and also the Quarterly Expenditure and Revenue Report. Cash and Investment Report. The general fund has an overall balance of $17,418,254 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The Road Fund, overall balance $2,663,329 with an investment amount of $815,000. The Flood Control District Fund has an overall balance of $680,925 with an investment amount of $513,000. Jail District has an overall balance of $3,265,703 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $42,64,967 with an investment amount of $14,439,000. For an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $15,934,839.
Gentlemen, any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mauricio.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I also have the Quarterly Revenue Report.
All right. Go ahead.
The General Fund, the property taxes collected to date is $9,756,881, which is consistent with the revenue collected, you know, from previous years. We're expecting the May 1st to hit anytime soon. The auto-lu tax is at $1,456,188. That's about a 7% increase from last year. The county half-sent share tax revenue is at $2,172,287. That's about 90% collected, which is similar to what we collected from last year. And then the state share sales tax, we are at $3,861,038, which is about 80% of our budgeted amount. So total revenue collected, it's overall, it's about $22 million, which is very consistent to what we've collected in percentage-wise from last year. The rest of the report has the expenditures, and I would be more than happy to go over all the funds if you need me to.
Perfect. Can we do that on an individual basis? Not a problem.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the revenue report?
No, sir. Thank you.
So we'll just do our executive session at the end. There's no action item on there. We're just going to do the executive session for legal advice. So we'll go on to action items. One is, let me change eyes. Discussion and possible action to approve the reappointment of Concepcion Bracamontes, Justice of the Peace, Pro Tempore Judge, from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. Chair, entertain a motion. Move to proof. Second. And discussion. Discussion.
No, sir, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted the microphone a little closer.
Yeah, I know. I don't like the lavalier after the last meeting. I couldn't hear it. That's how it sounded, so...
Sorry, Jennifer.
No, don't be sorry. That's, you know, make sure that people can hear what we're saying. So there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two is discussion, possible action for authorization to fill. And I'm going to read some of these positions. A, Deputy Corporal Position. B, Three Deputy Sheriff One Positions. Two Public Sa... Uh, two public safety telecommunication positions. Uh, we have a public health emergency per preparedness coordinator position, an adult probation supervisor position, and a vacant clerk, vacant clerk position at the recorder's office. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Second, and under discussion, I'm just very concerned that I've seen a lot of turnover and a lot of, in certain departments that are coming to, to, to approve replacement employees. I would kind of, not just for, for myself, but for my two colleagues, is to find out why it is that we have such a high turnover rate. And, and the reason that I say this is because we bring people on board, we train them, and then all of a sudden, they're gone, and so that's an extra cox to the taxpayers. And, you know, I just kind of, maybe, Jennifer, you can reach out to these departments and maybe give us some kind of rapport, or come to the next meeting and explain the rationale of, of the high turnover and, and what it's costing, uh, this, this county to hire, train, and then all of a sudden, they're gone, and then we got to start again. So if you don't mind, and if, do any of my colleagues have any concerns or questions?
No, I, I agree.
I'll concur with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, if we can have that for our next meeting, I would appreciate it. There is a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Madam Manager, are all these positions in the budget?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. That was my big question.
It says their money. Well, we, we spent some of the budget, even though they're at the budget, so, I mean, you use some of the money. We don't have, uh, all the money we budgeted, because some of it has been expended, right? But we'll find money. We'll ask, uh, to borrow some money from, uh, from the superintendent's office. He's, he's got six million dollars. He can help us out. Uh, if there are no other questions or concerns, there is a motion before us and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, of course not. Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, discussion, possible action to approve FY twenty-three Local Judicial Collection Enhancement Fund, JCEF, grant to fund the, the e-citation renewal agreement with thin blue line in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fourteen cents from January first, twenty twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Those requests is from the Justice of the Peace. Everything, uh, in legal form and order there, Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Okay, chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion, possible action to approve professional services agreement with knowledge capital alliance for COVID-nineteen testing, tracing, and vaccination plan in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents from April fifth, twenty twenty-two, through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Everything in order there, Jeff? Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement with the City of Nogales for the Election Department and the Recorder's Office to conduct and facilitate the candidate contest and ballot measures that will appear on the ballot for the August second and November eighth, twenty twenty-two, primary and general elections.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion and possible action to proclaim designation of, A, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, through April twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, as National Volunteer Week, and B, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, through the thirtieth of April, twenty twenty-two, as Administrative Professional Week. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, tax valuations A through K.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, monthly reports. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our reports are in.
Great. Chair, entertain a motion to accept reports?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously, and our reports are adopted. Item number nine, approval of minutes of four-five, twenty twenty-two. Everybody signed off on them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Demand Supervisor Moletta.
Move to approve. Demands totaling one million sixty-nine, uh, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents, of which three hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents are from the general fund.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we can meet our obligations. Uh, item eleven, discussion, possible action to approve contract with Susie, is it Charbel? Or Char- Charbowl? You don't know? So I guess I said it correctly, because we don't know.
Yes, you did.
To serve as a special deputy Santa Cruz County Attorney for Prosecution and presenting the jury trial of CF twenty-twenty-two dash zero four-two State versus Fred Calderon and CF two zero two-two zero four-three State versus Fantasia D. Chamber and CR twenty dash one twenty-eight State of Arizona versus Lowell Robinson. Uh, so we're just contracting the prosecution out.
Yes, and there are two cases. If you want to hear the details, I'm happy to give them to you.
Uh, just, just for the benefit of the, this is the one where the baby?
One is the baby homicide case, and the other is an, um, a case involving an officer who was shot at and some civilians who were run off the road and had guns pointed at them.
Okay, great. Perfect. Great. Any other questions or concerns? Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, Kim, do you, do you think we can do the executive session in about twenty minutes before we? Are we good? Okay. So we'll go into executive session, and then we'll come back for our study session. So at this time, chair, entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, A three and four, discussion and consultation for legal advice and direction regarding the proposed response by outside counsel to pending litigation, CV twenty-two zero six-nine Show Baseball, Inc. versus Santa Cruz County. Uh, chair, entertain a motion? Not all at once.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now recess and convene into executive session. So at this time, uh, chair, entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting and convene into our study session.
So, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. We are now in our study session. Is a presentation of the nature-based restorative economy in Santa Cruz County, Arizona, by the University of Arizona. Vice Chairman Brecker, you have anything to add before we call Ms. Shore up? Linda, please.
Thank you all. I'm Linda Shore, and I'm here to-
The mic close to, that way they can hear out in Zoom world.
Oh, in Zoom world, okay. Um, thank you all. I'm Linda Shore. I'm here today to give you, uh, Cliff Notes version, if you will, of the past eighteen months that led up to this study session. As you are all very well aware, there is an active interest in the role Mother Nature plays in the county, and it's that interest that led a group of us, nine of us actually, in October of twenty twenty, to begin taking a look at whether we could actually quantify the role that nature has in the economy of the county. And I'm not talking about the intrinsic value, because everyone knows you feel better when you're outside doing something, um, in nature, but I'm talking about actually the dollars and cents. Is there a way we could determine whether dollars and cents come to the bottom line of the economy as a result of anything related to nature? None of us in this group of nine that got together were economists, so we knew we were going to have to hire experts to tell us if this was just a pipe dream, and experts mean money. So our first order of business was raising funds. Um, the, I'm really happy to report that we were able to raise our goal, meet our goal of fifty thousand dollars, um, in a short four months, raised from twenty-one sponsors. And at this point, I just wanted to, um, clarify a, the point that South Thirty-two did not pay for this study. South Thirty-two contributed to the study, which is an important distinction, because other companies like Borderlands Restoration Network and the Nature Conservancy and the Tucson Audubon Society that operates Patent Center in Patagonia, and actually the family that runs the, uh, Circle Z Dude Ranch on Highway eighty-two between, uh, Patagonia and Nogales were also corporate sponsors. So, South Thirty-two, we appreciated their contribution immensely, but they were part of a community that did this. Uh, once we raised the money, the next task was writing an RFQ to send out to experts to tell us if this was just a pipe dream that we had, and Chuck Klingenstein, um, was largely responsible for that effort. Chuck's on a plane heading home from Seattle right now, otherwise he would be here, so I, we could pat him on the back, but he, through his efforts, the RFQ was written, and we sent it out in March of twenty twenty-one. We sent it out to thirteen different consulting firms across the United States, all of whom specialized in a field that I didn't know existed, I do now, called, um, environmental economics analysis. Of the thirteen, we got back eight responses, and interestingly enough, the five that didn't send back formal responses only did so because they couldn't meet our timeline. We said we needed, it needed to have, be done in twenty twenty-one. They were all intrigued by the premise that you could actually say nature caused this to happen in the economy, without being dramatic about it. So we, eight responses we received, we went, um, through, the, the nine of us, the planning group, Carolyn was a member of that, went through a formal analysis, uh, process, that was like reading term papers, trust me. And we unanimously, uh, selected the University of Arizona. Specifically, it's, was the Department of Agricultural and Resource Economics. That team was led by Dr. George Frisbold, who's on the call and will be doing a presentation to you in a few minutes. Um, we hired them, they began work in May of twenty twenty-one, and they completed the study in December of twenty twenty-one, right on time. It resulted in a hundred and eighty-page study, and, uh, Alma shared that with you, and you'll hear the highlights of it today. There were actually, from layperson's perspective, there were two parts to this study, and by now, we were, we had an acronym for it, of course. We were calling it the NBRE, the Nature-Based Restorative Economy. There were two parts to this study, like any study you're going to approach, where are you now and where are you going? The where are you now was, are you guys making up the fact that nature can, is tangible and drops to the bottom line of Santa Cruz County? And then if you aren't making it up, where can it go? So, not to steal George's thunder, but the good news is there was positive findings in both. George's team baselined the data for the NBRE in twenty nineteen, which was the last year economic data was, uh, made available by the government. That was not an easy task, because we made up the NBRE, so it wasn't in a nice little economic bucket. They had to piece together the data. And I'll tell you what, his analyst, if you guys ever need work, look to the U of A for work. His analysts were phenomenal in terms of the, uh, work they did and the way they worked with the public to get input. They interviewed people all over the county in terms of where we were in twenty nineteen and where we're going. There is money dropping, that dropped to the bottom line in twenty nineteen, coming from the NBRE, and there's a lot of upside. That's good news for all of us. Um, the other point I'll make before I turn it over to George is when I said the thirteen economists were all intrigued by the whole idea of this study, that's because not only had it never been done before, quantifying what nature means to an economy, it had never been, been done before in Santa Cruz County, they were all of the impression it's never been done before, period. This is the first study of its type in the United States. So that's, there's a lot of upside in that in terms of PR for the county that I would hope we can all take advantage of. You know, the, we're small, but we're forward-thinking, whatever, however it is you guys want to market it. The experts in the area were impressed that the county, we as part of the county took the initiative to make this study happen. So that said, I'm going to turn it over to George. Um, he is on the phone in Zoom land with a backup from tech guy here. Um, he'll, his presentation will be, run about half an hour, and then he's agreed to make himself available for any questions or comments afterwards.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you, Linda. I appreciate it.
Take it, George.
Sure. First, can you guys hear me okay?
Well, we can hear you okay. We can't see you, so.
You can't see me? Okay, can you see? Let's see, I'm gonna share the screen. Can you see the screen?
That's, it's, there it is. Go ahead.
Okay, so cooking. If at some point I move around and I'm not audible, um, shout out, let me know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And so I'm going to go through this rather quickly, um, but I'm happy to answer, you know, any and all questions people have later. And also, if there's questions of clarification, again, kind of shout out and, and, um, I will try my best to answer those. Okay. Um, as Linda said, this is, um, Santa Cruz County Nature-Based Restorative Economy Contribution Study. This is work done with myself, um, Ashley Bickel, who is currently on maternity leave, and Dari Duvall, who's actually on medical bedrest leave because she has a baby due in June, who is having complications. So she's in the hospital with mom and baby being monitored. So far, things are okay, but she has to stay put. Also, Wendy Zhang, who provided very able research assistance, who's also studying for her, uh, final master's degree oral examination, which is tomorrow. So that's why I am the one presenting this solely, but-
Well, you better not let your team down, uh, George.
That's true. Some of the other people in the audience have seen Dari and Ashley give this presentation, so it's a tough act to follow.
Well, anyway, wish your, your two colleagues, uh, a, a safe outcome with, with their expected baby, so that everything comes out good for them and their families. So please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're, we're going to talk a little bit about this study, what the purpose, the objectives were, our basic approach, what we mean by the nature-based restorative economy for Santa Cruz County, and then we actually estimate the total economic contribution of the NBRE, including multiplier effects, and I'll discuss that in more detail later. And then we're going to finish up with some takeaways and possible future research. So the purpose and the objectives, so nature and the resources and benefits it provides are an underpinning for human life. They also contribute to the health of regional economies through nature-based industries that depend on them. And these different kinds of economic activities support jobs, demand, income, and economic development. So what were our objectives? Well, the first was to characterize and quantify- Well, the first was to characterize and quantify what the nature-based restorative economy was, and to capture its total economic contribution. And what, what, what did it contribute in terms of jobs, income value added, which is the equivalent of GDP at the local level, and sales? So the first goal was, we developed kind of a socio-economic and natural resource profile of the county, to see how nature-based activities fit in with the function of the whole county economy. And then we did SWOT analysis. SWOT's an acronym for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, to better understand what, what the outlook is for these activities in the medium and long term. And working with the various stakeholder groups, this three-legged stool concept emerged, which we found quite useful. You can think of the Nature-Based Restorative Economy on three legs of a stool. One is nature-based tourism. So people are going, you know, nature activities, they're going to parks, they're doing outdoor recreation. And when they do so, they come into the county and they spend money, and that generates demand, which again, generates economic activity and income. There's also nature-based industries, economic activity that relies on local renewable resources that are provided by nature. Think, you know, like agriculture, things, things that use renewable, biological, and other kinds of resources. Finally, there's conservation, restoration, and preservation activities. And so, even the activities of people coming in and doing restoration and preservation of natural areas, they're, they're spending money, they're purchasing resources, they're actually generating demand for, for goods and services within the economy. Now, different economists have done different studies measuring these three things separately. And in fact, I was part of a National Academies of Sciences writing team a couple of years ago, working on what was called the bioeconomy, which fits more closely with what would be here, nature-based industries. Different economists have looked at the economic contribution of these three things in isolation. But, so we, we had methods, we had frameworks to measure these things, but to our knowledge, no one had put measurement of all three of these kinds of activities together in any kind of comprehensive and systematic and consistent way. So, the project proceeded in four phases. The first was just baseline economic resource profile for Santa Cruz County. We wanted to pick kind of a pre-pandemic baseline, because the pandemic has changed so much things around. Then we, we working to define what exactly is part of the nature-based restorative economy. We did the SWOT analysis to profile the future trajectory of the NBRE. And finally, we looked at the overall economic contribution of the NBRE. So again, we surveyed literature and how people had estimated impacts of these different separate effects. We pulled together all the secondary government and business data we could. In addition to that, we had stakeholder and expert interviews of focus groups. We interviewed a total of more than 40 people using, it's called snowball sampling technique. You start talking to people, then you ask the first people you talked to, well, who else should we talk to? And, and the, the network expands, and that's why it's called the snowball approach. And part of that was to kind of understand how different stakeholders interact with the NBRE. And also, we had to do a lot of primary data collection, because some of these activities, going back here, things like tourism, there's economic accounts for part sectors that are tourism, but there isn't a tourism sector in the economy. Some nature-based industries, like agriculture, have separate income accounts. But things like spending on conservation and restoration isn't in any set economic account. So we had to actually collect primary data for the different entities that were involved in doing that work. So, nature-based tourism, information on that was kind of collected at the sites, or from the sites people go to, through the national parks, state parks, Forest Service, other natural areas. There's agritourism, there's wine tourism, there's, you know, visitors overnight spending, and, and there's hunting. So, we, we pieced together data from these sources to get estimates of tourism spending of people who go to these sites. So overall, nature-based tourism contributed almost $23 million in sales in the county. That supported about 320 jobs, 8.9 in, in income. What we're calling income is a combination of wages and salaries and proprietor's income. And it contributed about $13 million to the, to Santa Cruz County's GDP. Going on to nature-based industries, again, these are things that are based on kind of renewable natural resources. This includes things like agriculture, winery. There's a small amount of food and wood manufacturing sourcing from local sources, and renewable energy. Again, adding up the economic activity here, these industries contributed 40 million in sales. They supported 345 jobs, 12 and a half million in income, 12.6 million to the county's GDP. And again, there's, there's restoration activities. So there's, you know, different entities involved in environmental preservation along the Santa Cruz River. There's conservation throughout the county on public and private land. There's a lot of restoration activities along the Santa Cruz River and Sonoyta Creek, and different volunteer groups are involved, environmental NGOs are involved, federal government is involved. And so this creates, you know, local spending in the economy. Again, with, with conservation and restoration, up and down the line, there's different levels of involvement. There's the Department of Interior, USDA, the US section of the IBWC. At the state level, there's state parks, Arizona Game and Fish, ADWR. There's the Santa Cruz County Natural Resources District as well. There's a lot of nonprofit groups, other entities, and, and a huge volunteer base that's also involved. So overall, adding up all these different conservation, restoration, and preservation activities, they contributed $3.17 million in sales. And again, you don't necessarily think of ecological restoration as something that's generating economic activity. It's often, I think incorrectly framed as jobs versus the environment, and here's a case of, you know, protecting the environment, actually creating jobs, and it supported 114 jobs, contributed 4.4 million to the county's GDP. So, the direct economic contribution of Santa Cruz County's NBRE was 779 jobs. When you add all of those different activities up, 31.1 million in county GDP, and 76.6 million in sales. Now, when you, we're going to look at what are called multiplier effects. So anytime a business produces and sells something, they have to buy inputs. Those inputs to the, you know, represent sales of local, local people selling inputs for production. So, when, when a business buys products, they're generating sales for their inputs, which is income for local suppliers of those inputs. Also, when businesses pay their employees, or they have their, their profits and proprietor's income, those wages and profits are then spent on local consumer goods and services in the economy, which aren't necessarily directly related to those specific activities. So, people get their paycheck, they pay the rent, they buy things, and that stimulates demand in the economy. Now, this input-output modeling framework we use captures the effect that some of the spending stays in the county, and some of the spending leaks out. So if you're buying a product that's coming from out of county, most of the value of that product is going back to the source region. But there's often retail markups that people still capture in county. So we're, we're measuring all the effects on other industries that the NBR contributes to that stays in the county. And that's 53.8 million in GDP, over 121 million in sales, 1,200 jobs, and $4.7 million in state and local tax revenues. So, when we, so that's kind of a snapshot of where the NBRE is as of 2019. So, we, we surveyed people, we did interviews to develop the SWOT analysis, and here's some of the strengths and opportunities that, that we found. Again, there's a lot of potential for promoting nature-based tourism. There's outdoor recreation, there's agritourism, there's, you know, vineyards, wineries, dude ranches, you know, you pick possibilities. There's ecotourism. Again, more can be, you know, could possibly be done to promote, you know, historic and multicultural and natural areas and recreational opportunities in the county. And then, you know, a planning thing that has to be considered is, you know, are there bottlenecks into developing, you know, the tourism industry? Are there, are there bottlenecks in, in infrastructure? The county does pretty well at attracting visitors to special events, but, but, you know, a question is, you know, is, is the whole tourism infrastructure, lodging, restaurants, supporting tourism activities built up sufficiently to actually, you know, capture more people coming in? In terms of strengthening nature-based industries and conservation, again, things could be done, you know, to protect and preserve working landscapes. There's, there's succession planning for older farmers. There could be training for, for young farmer and ranchers. There's conservation easements. There's a host of different USDA programs that provides economic support for farmers and ranchers that, that could possibly be taken advantage of. Again, vineyards and wineries and agritourism is, seems to be a source of growth in the county. And again, that's something that could be supported. Again, in terms of conservation and restoration activities, right now, a lot of this is done either through not, not-for-profit groups, sometimes by themselves or in combination with federal agencies. There might be opportunities in the future if, if something like carbon storage or sequestration markets were to develop, so that could actually be kind of a standalone, private economic activity. Again, there's been a lot of volunteerism in the county with people working on conservation and restoration, and so it would be interesting to track and document the total volunteer Again, there's a lot of local and regional initiatives that, that this could feed into. There's the National Heritage Area, there's county-level initiatives for digital infrastructure, there's a Settle, Set in the Landscape Initiative to preserve landscapes in Cochise County, there's the Skyline Restorative Collaborative. So there's a whole, whole host of activities that relate, you know, or relevant to the NBRE. So what are some of the takeaways? Well, one is, Santa Cruz County is really this unique natural area. It's one of 55 areas nationally that are federally recognized for their, you know, distinct landscape and nature. And the share of the county economy linked to the NBR is considerable, you know, especially in areas away from kind of the I-19 corridor, obviously, cross-border trade. And the Nogales metro area is also a big and important economic driver, but the NBRE is, is not insignificant. And then, if you look at job growth, one of the things we were looking at was not just the total number of jobs, but over the last decade, which sectors of the economy, which activities actually contributed to net job gains? And the NBRE counted for 30% of the net job gains in the county. And this, this includes things that are very closely part of the NBR or closely linked to. So, for example, things like tourist-related activity is a big source of, of growth. Again, we're trying to tease out how much of that was from the, from nature-based tourism And again, there's several industries that are part of the economic base of the county, like ranching, the wine industry, nature parks. By the economic base, this means that these are sectors or economic activities that are bringing money into the economy from the outside. A lot of service industries, people are paying, you know, each other for their local services. And in regional economics, there's this saying, it's like you can't have a, a local economy based on everybody doing everybody else's washing. If, if a local economy is going to grow, you have to be able to bring money in from outside. And ranching, wineries, and nature park visitation are bringing money in from the outside. Santa Cruz County actually bucks a national trend. Historically, agricultural employment in the US has been declining steadily, and in most counties, every, you know, over, decade over decade, the number of people employed in, in agriculture-related industries has been going down steadily. In Arizona, both Yuma and Santa Cruz County have bucked this trend, where agricultural jobs in Santa Cruz County have actually increased over the past decade. So, the NBR directly supports $31 million in county GDP. If you include the multiplier effects, it's closer to 50 million. Again, the study presents a baseline of existing activity. And so, if you read the report, you'll see the different kinds of forces at play that influence the NBRE. And there's a lot of opportunities for growth in, for, for growth and expansion there. Potential future research. Linda said a little bit about, there's certain values to the environment that we are not capturing. We're like the, the intrinsic value, you know, how, how good you feel being out in nature. We were focusing very narrowly and specifically on what kinds of employment, what kinds of spending, what kinds of sales and income are generated from these activities. We recognize that these are not all the values to nature. And so, there's other types of economic studies that capture this. People try to measure people's enjoyment from being out in the nature. People have done studies looking at how being close to natural areas improves property values. That requires a different kind of analysis, but that's a type of study that could certainly be done in the future. And so again, the county's, you know, has rich biodiversity, a lot of natural beauty. And so there's a lot of scope for kind of studying how people interact with these activities. And that's what I have for now.
There we go. Thank you, George. I appreciate it. Vice Chairman Bracker, since the item is under your name, do you want to start us off
George, I have a question. On the three, on the three components, do you have a breakdown in each of those categories of how much they're contributing to the economy and how many jobs they have in each factor?
Yeah.
And that's, and that, is that one of the addendums in the report?
Yeah, that's, in fact, if we go, we go, I can pop it up. Yeah, it's, it's in the, yeah. If you go through, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, so, yeah, so, can you see the slides?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so here, here it is for nature-based tourism. Here it is for nature-based industries. Here it is for conservation and restoration. And then, that way back in the slides, in the report, we actually have it kind of all totaled up in terms of jobs and direct effects and multiplier effects and all added up.
Right. I saw it totaled up, but I didn't see it broken out by industry, by, by group. So you could tell us what, how much employment we have in winery, how much employment we have in?
Let's see. Wineries would be under this. Let's see, what wineries would be under this nature-based industries. And it's that took some digging because again, there's there's government accounts from USDA and Department of Commerce for like agriculture. Wineries are included as manufacturing. Some winery activities are kind of under the farming agricultural part, some of it is under manufacturing, so that all had to be combined.
That was my, that was the question, I was looking for the detail in each of the in those two sections of each of the industries that you were looking at, each of the sectors.
Right, we show, again, in the report, it says like, this is how all these things added up. So yeah, it's like this, this is what this is what's from wineries. This is what's from other kinds of farming and ranching, yeah, so that that level of detail is provided.
Thank you. Are we wrapping it up? That was my question for right now.
Supervisor Malarra. No, since you had put it on there, I wanted you to take the first crack at it, so.
You mentioned the increase in agricultural jobs. I'm assuming that includes our produce, right?
No, it doesn't include, by produce, do you mean like the the transshipping?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, that's that's separate. And what, so if you go to we did what's called share shift analysis, where we look at job growth. So like up at the top, you can see that farm employment grew a hundred and twenty percent, net increase in two hundred and sixty-five jobs. Where you would see the the transshipment of of produce across the border, that would be in under wholesale trade. And right, all, so the produce would be kind of a subset of that, but a but big contributor to that growth in jobs and wholesale trade was was from uh produce imports.
Can you define farm employment?
Sure, some somebody, somebody working on a farm or ranch producing something in Santa Cruz County. So cattle, hay, any, any, anything grown.
Hemp, marijuana.
Yeah, if it's in there, if USDA or Department of Commerce calculated it and it's legally produced, yeah, then it would be in there.
Okay, just curious.
Nice qualifier legally produced.
Well, thank you. That that was my question.
So so George, you know, I had the opportunity to kind of skim over the whole report and and you did a lot of work. And even when you were doing your questioning of 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 people, was that throughout the county? Was it mainly in the Patagonia area, was it in Toubac, was it in O'Gallus? Did you go to the the grocery store there at Rio Rico and try to get some some input? Because I think when when we look at what you're showing us here today, and you talked about the the groups that you talked to about forty people or so, you called it the snowball effect, I think it was what you called it. How did you, how did you select your forty interviews?
Well, here, if you can see this slide, here's the breakdown of of who we talked to. And so about a third was from people around the I nineteen corridor, you thirty-eight percent were were kind of elsewhere. Other kind of the the away from that area. And about a quarter were people who had, you know, they were like county, you know, government officials who had like a countywide remit. So that that was the
So you so you spread it out, so you try to get a a wide array, and I think any study needs to to be that way, because if you just focus on one area, then your 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 data is a little skewed. Yeah, I think you and and your group did a really outstanding job, I think that, you know, this is the first shot that we get. But I think there's also an opportunity to revisit it in in a year or two to see how how things have changed. I did like the picture, was that a woodpecker eating an orange?
Remember what that was.
Thought it was a woodpecker, and then your first one, was it a flycatcher, the little red?
I think the first, yeah, I think that was a flycatcher.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I love birds, have a lot of pictures too, I'll share them with you one day, but yeah, you know, I I think it's it's great that we see, you know, what this industry has, and I'm glad that you really put in some of the other industries there, as I saw your chart, you had construction, you had some other it was, wasn't that one, it was a bigger chart where you had where my colleague was asking about the farm.
Oh, the jobs?
Yeah, the jobs, what 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 everything is created. Of course, you also mentioned that there really is maybe not enough hotel rooms here in the community to expand more, I think unfortunately, sometimes what I see is that you have people that are staying in Tucson, it'll come down for a day, they'll take a few pictures, they may buy a sandwich or a soda at the local market and then go out, and I think in order to really capture more of it, we need to find ways of 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 finding I don't know how you can build a hotel on on federal funds, but try to identify some type of of way to capture a little more of it, because it's certainly not fair to those small small communities that are doing that, and and even though I saw that it went from seven hundred and some jobs to twelve hundred. Was that like a a little under like seven tenths of a point percentage growth to go to twelve hundred that you used?
Well, look, those so those are all the jobs that are currently supported both directly and indirectly, so it's not a it's not a growth, it's kind of like as of twenty nineteen, that's a snapshot.
Yeah, because it because you said there including multiplier effects, I was wondering what your multiplier was. But but I think we get the idea that there are opportunities to continue to grow your 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 employment, you know, there are a lot of other issues too that that we talk about that have impacts on, you know, affordable housing is one thing that you can have that, I'm glad you talked about farming, I know that we have a lot of cattle ranchers that raise cattle here. We see in Rio Rico now that they're using it back as as farmland, there's a lot of cattle out there too, so there's a lot of important I think, communities that you brought together to show the the whole whole picture. And I'm glad that you had a lot of participation from the groups that Linda mentioned at the beginning that contributed to the study and you know, I want to thank you, George, and you did a great job. Jennifer sent me the whole study, so it gives me a little time to review it slowly, but you want to take another thing at the piñata?
Sorry, George, I referred to you as a piñata. So George, in a part of your study, you're talking, there's a breakdown of people that are coming here to cycle, people that are coming here to hike, people that are coming here to birdwatch. Is there, did you see anything that stood out to you was happening in the East County versus what's happening on the I nineteen corridor? And then how do we quantify some of this to? You know, my colleague said that, you know, one of the things that we lack in Santa Cruz County is is hotels or places for people to stay. How do you quantify this study into an investor that's saying, what do I do, what can I do in Santa Cruz County? With capital?
Well, I think, you know, again, what a lot of local areas, they'll do like, you know, visitor surveys. You know, who's coming to the county, why are they coming to the county, are they staying? And they're spending, right, overnight visitors are going to spend a lot more. If I'm going to like, you know, come in and ride my bicycle, maybe stop at the coffee shop and leave, I'm not spending very much. But if I'm staying at a hotel, I'm staying overnight, I'm going to spend more. And so we actually did a big visitor study for for Yuma a while ago to kind of get help them understand who's coming to Yuma and why. You know, and are there, you know, are there bottlenecks so that, you know, would people stay longer if they could, you know, do more things? Right now, I think doing a visitor survey of similar fashion is a little premature because, you know, COVID, we're not back to regular, you know, tourism and travel and visiting situation, so a survey isn't really going to be representative of of you know, what's, you know, what's going out in the future. But, you know, what, again, one thing, it it seemed that different folks would come to particular natural areas and they weren't necessarily, they didn't necessarily know about everything in the county. So that there might, I think there's kind of nature-based tourism across marketing possibilities. People may come to one site, they don't know about another site, and but those are the very people who might want to try, you know, something else and come down more. Another thing we found is that there's a lot of folks who are involved with environmental restoration who live in Tucson and they commute down. And again, they're not spending, you know, as much as, you know, someone were actually residing down here. But where we tried to capture you know, the different kinds of spending, there's 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 visitor, there's most of these areas here, they collect aid on visitors and they kind of know whether how long they're staying and there's particular visitor profiles of spending. So that's that's kind of where we tried to intercept folks. Possibility in the future is, you know, there's a lot of nature areas that don't have a specific entry point or account place to monitor people coming in. So getting, you know, better data from from those types of people coming into the county would be helpful, I think.
Answer your question.
And when do you think would be an appropriate time for a visitor survey? Because what I'm seeing in Toubac and in different places is our towns are filling up during the day. Could be, you know, these are people from Arizona that are coming. But, you know, when I was at the Toubac Festival, I sat with people from all over the country. When I was eating my gyro sandwich.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, there's some numbers I said that, you know, travel numbers are about like ninety percent of of normal still. And again, you you might want to start thinking, I don't know, maybe like after the summer, there's kind of a lull when it's hot. But, you know, as things cool down, you know, next year might be a good time.
And then what is a what is a period of time that a visitor study take, is it over a course of a year, is it over a course of a season, is it over the course of a month?
Well, again,
That you look at?
Yeah, well, I mean, we we had it, we did it for Yuma, basically, we had surveys at like all the major hotels. And people, you know, could fill out, you have to keep it short or people aren't going to do it, but you know, and then people could like enter to get a prize, I forgot, they got like gift cards or things, you know, they entered, they they entered their name in a raffle. And I think we did it for like an entire year, because again, you know, with Yuma, it's it's pretty seasonal and, you know, Yuma is not the kind of like tourist destination point that Santa Cruz County is, a lot of people are just passing through. But I think that study we ran for about a year. And you definitely want to have, you know, have something that spans kind of your peak visiting times.
Okay, thank you.
I have two.
Go ahead.
Two questions or or comments. I I agree with my two colleagues, lodging is an issue in Santa Cruz County. You know, Sonoda, with people coming into the wineries, a lot of times you you want people to stay there and not drive after drinking. We've had the issue with our association wanting to come down and host down here in Santa Cruz County, and we don't have a venue big enough. So we we do need a convention center. So the visitor study is real critical and, you know, I I agree with my colleague, I I think if we do that sooner rather than later, it would be good. You also mentioned the cross-site where people can go to one side of the county and then visit another. I don't see Pina Blanca Lake or Sycamore Canyon on that, and that that's a beautiful area that people need to know about. Sycamore Canyon is amazing. And if if we can get people to visit east side and then west side or vice versa, that would be amazing, because those areas are beautiful.
Yeah, and that, and again, that was a thing that, you know, we were finding, we're we're, people weren't aware of everything that's here, it's kind of like, you know, the more you look, the more you find.
Perfect, well, thank you for the study, though.
Sure.
It's very detailed and we really, I personally really appreciate it.
So so George, I have always called this the undiscovered county, and it's kind of like it's kind of like a take on the Star Trek, and I've said this for a long time, and there's a lot of beauty, there's a lot of very unique places. So I think as we look at the study and and I would hope that you would do similar presentations to our chambers that we have here, number one. Number two is here's an opportunity for marketing. If you don't market yourself, you don't get your people here. But as my colleagues have said, even if you do a a another survey that's three or four questions and you can raffle U of A hats, you know, you'll 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 get a lot of responses. But I think that that when we look at and and something that my colleague Rudy mentioned is why not have like a little brochure that says, well, if you like this area, try going to this area? I don't know if you want to put monuments out there, unfortunately, sometimes you have things out there and people vandalize them. You can have the best signage out there where you can have, you know, you're here, this is here, if you have an opportunity, maybe you want to visit over there, but those pamphlets could be at the local chamber office or tourist offices people come in. So that gives people an an opportunity. The other thing, like I said, you can also have surveys there. I know the Toubac Festival draws people from all over the country. It brings a lot of different artisans to the festival. And I know we hear it every day because there's not enough bathroom facilities out there. We don't have enough rooms, but we don't have enough bathrooms out there to really accommodate sometimes what happens, and so those are some of the issues that we have to look at, but you know, I I I know that we're coming out of a really bad cycle of the pandemic. My hope is that we don't, you know, go into another cycle hearing everything that's going on. But perhaps in a year or two, there's an opportunity to revisit and revise. Because I think it's important that when you come out of the the pandemic, that we actually see what it is, and 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 I will say this, I know people are traveling. I know I went to take my grandchildren to Disneyland. And even with reservations, it was packed. And they've since eased up on those reservations, so it's going to be twice as bad. But I think here are other opportunities, so, you know, thank you so much. Can you do something, before I, I'll let you close it, Linda, since you started us. Is there a way we can have a link to yours? I know we're going to put a link on our on our agenda, but if we could have a separate link, because I think there's I know our press would like to look at the report more. And that way, it it's accessible, we could probably link it onto our website and people can just click and and do that, so.
Yeah, sure, in fact, we have it up on our our university cooperative extension website. And we've got the report, we also have like shorter versions of it, we have like a short kind of four-page summary. Because, you know, we know a lot of people don't want to read a hundred and eighty pages of don't want to read 180 pages of economics. They want the, they kind of want the punchline. So, you know, we're happy to, you know, to provide it in different like lengths, because we know that people are busy, they don't want, they don't necessarily want the whole report. If they want to look at the whole report, great. If they want to look at the four-page or the two-page, that's great. If there's other venues that we could present that you would think was helpful, we're happy to do that as well.
Great. Thank you, George, I really appreciate it. You and your team did an outstanding job. And once again, congratulations. So Linda, you got it started, and you can close it off, come up to the.
Before Linda gets up there, Linda, I'd like to thank you and Chuck and everybody who pulled this thing together. It's a really great grassroots work, grassroots effort to really identify.
Grass, but yes, thank you. Only legal, right.
Not the grass that Supervisor Malarra was talking about.
Exactly.
But it was really great effort and to really demonstrate.
Thank you. I'm actually extremely proud of the group that pulled this together, and I'm honored to be part of it. Thank you, Bruce. I just wanted to kind of wrap it up with the comment that there were 21 people that chipped in money. There was a group of, I'd say about 50, that we called endorsers of this study. They participated in the, the interviews that George's team did, but they also led us a lot of insight into who we needed to talk to and where we need to go. Olivia from the O'Gallus Chamber of Commerce was a big piece of this, as was Dennis Eshelman. I don't know if you, Dennis, he represents one of the Tubac business communities. A group from Tukumkari helped, and there were a number of people on the I-19 corridor too. So it really is a county-wide grassroots effort that brought us all together. And I think what's important to hear at this point from you guys is that you all support it, that you understand, yeah, this does matter in the county, and that you are interested in moving forward in some way, shape, or form with life, according to Mother Nature.
I think that's, I think it's super important to figure out what the next step is from this study, other than just taking a study and shelving it.
Exactly.
Saying, wow, how wonderful. And, and five years from now, we go, didn't we do a study back on something like this? You know, what did we, what do we do with this information?
That's exactly, it needs to be actionable in order to have it be worth anything. So I appreciate that. And I think you guys combined just in supporting it and say, hey, guys, read this and think about what you can do with it, that that will make all the difference in the world to people like Olivia.
Yeah, and I will tell you this, I'm very involved with our local chamber down here, and I'm the chairman of the Government Affairs Committee, and we meet and we'll make sure that you have the opportunity to present. And we don't have an action item to do anything official, but as far as I'm concerned, I think I see no problem with supporting this. I would also encourage that we continue to update it and, and put it out there. I think at the end of the day, it's just another tool for economic development.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
I know that for a while, we, we tried to get people together, and it's like herding cats, and then things change, and then it's, you know, move on to the next hot issue. But as far as I'm concerned, I think, look, there's an opportunity for all of us to live, play, and work together, no matter what the industry is, and I support that. And I think that we just need to find ways, again, to market.
Yeah.
To make sure that people look at that, because otherwise, it's, as my friend Bruce says, it'll just be another report on top of a shelf, getting, getting dust, and we don't want to do that.
No. We won't let you do that, so.
Mr. Chair, I.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I, I agree with the comments my colleagues made, and maybe we can take it a step forward and, and together with the chamber, you all, us, put together a pamphlet where if people go to Tubac, Sonoyta, O'Gallus, Rio Rico, they can find it and say, hey, you know, they go to Inabat, and they say, oh, there's all these things to do in Santa Cruz County, you know, biking trails, winery, whatever it may be, you know, hiking.
No, absolutely, that's very doable.
Birdwatching, everything.
If I, if I could pipe in, a lot of like tourism websites will say like, you know, what you do on day one, what you do on day two. If you could do things like that, then you're kind of luring people for, for multiple night stays, where spending's going to be larger. There's certainly, there's certainly enough to do over multiple days in the county.
Great. Well, George, thank you so much. Linda, thank you and your group for doing such an outstanding job. Unless there are any other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our study session and reconvene regular meeting.
So moved.
There are second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now convened into a regular session, and Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There are second discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.